Good afternoon. Here we go. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the February 8th, 2023 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on CCPS website at www.carolK12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15 PM. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you're not speaking at this time. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need approval of the agenda. Ms. Sevigny?
Ms. Herbert, I move to, I make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
With?
And I think we need to second it and then have a discussion.
Okay, and this is seconded by Dr. Dorsey. And now, any comments? Ms. Sevigny again.
Okay. Ms. Herbert, under, under action items, we do need to add an agenda item for the Jule settlement.
Thank you. And that would be J F?
It would be item six.
Six F, my fault. Can't even read. Okay, 6F.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sevigny. Any other comments? So first, I need to approve the adjustment to the, to the agenda, correct? We need, we, that's okay. We need to approve the amendment first. Okay, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It passes.
Now, I need a, we've already had a first and second motion on that. Now I need to approve the new agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It passes unanimously. And now, at this time, I would like to have the Carroll County Student Government Report, please. Good evening.
Oh, excuse me.
Approval, ma'am, it's my fault. I am just whipping through here. You know how I am, folks?
Well, it won't be long.
Okay, sorry about that.
So moved.
Okay, so moved. That was a first. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second, okay. We need the approval of the Board of Education minutes on January 11th, 2023, and it has been revised. Any comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, we will have the Carroll County Student Government. I was just checking to see if you were paying attention.
Got a little excited there.
Because I am always on a roll.
Of course. Good evening, Board Members. My name is Nikki Zhang. I'm the President of CCSGA, otherwise known as the Carroll County Student Government Association. Unfortunately, I'll have to leave right after I give this report because I have a prior appointment. So I don't usually, I usually stay for a portion of public comments, but I won't be able to do that today. We are currently planning our February General Assembly, which will be happening next week at Century High School, actually exactly a week after this, February 15th. And unfortunately, Emily isn't here to talk about our SHOB elections or the fact that it's being held at Century, so I'll talk about it. Our SHOB elections, the General Assembly is actually the first of two elections to occur. This is the primary election, and this election is reserved for only high school students who attend our February General Assembly. They'll listen to speeches and go through a question and answer session with the candidates, and then will also vote during this General Assembly. There are currently four candidates running at our primary, two of which will proceed to our General Assembly, General Election, which will then be filmed right here, actually, in this boardroom. And they'll give their speeches and participate in another Q and A. And that General Election will occur March 22nd, where the video will be released to countywide, to all high school students, and they'll have the opportunity to vote on the candidates. And the registration form for our General Assembly has been released, so please reach out to any advisors if students are interested in attending that. Additionally, CCSGA is currently collecting donations for all schools, from all schools, for Carroll County's Shepherd Staff Homeless Shelter. Each school has the option to choose from four different drives, emergency meals or snacks, toiletry items, household items, and blankets/socks. March is often a time where homeless shelters don't really get a lot of donations, so hopefully, with getting student participation and involvement, we can get those donations up and running at the other homeless shelters. On top of that, I've been arranging President's Meetings with student government presidents across the county to share ideas from the individual schools, and we're currently inviting high school students to our CCSGA Executive Board Meetings in order to get the outreach and transparency out to all the students across the county. Finally, a couple of MASCE updates, being the Maryland Association of Student Councils. MASCE is hosting their legislative session this Saturday, February 11th, at Wheaton High School. Registration has closed, but this is their General Assembly, where students all across the state have the opportunity to vote on their SMOB, their student member on the Board of Education from Maryland. MASCE is also hosting an annual three-day, two-night convention to vote for their officers for the following school year. Due to COVID, this annual convention hasn't been in person since 2020, but it's up and running again, and it'll be in Ocean City this year. It'll occur from March 22nd to March 24th, and registration will be open from February 12th to February 27th. In order for students to actually attend this convention, their schools have to be member schools, and that registration deadline has already passed, I believe. So if you're unsure of whether or not your school is a member school, please visit the MASCE website to find out more information. And obviously, Emily has the contact for that. She's not here today. Please look out for more information as the registration opens. But yeah, that's all the updates I have for today. Thank you, and have a good evening, have a good meeting.
At this time, we do not have any public comment. Just remember, it's always open the day before. And Ms. Gaddis is in charge, and they, and they can also call her if they're having trouble with the website. So I just want to do a friendly reminder of that. At this time, we will go on to employee groups.
She wasn't ready for you.
I was not. And I'm first this month. All right, good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board Members and Commissioner. I am Sledge Jordan, President of CCA. I'm proud to share that CCA members delivered 503 pounds of donated food to Carroll Food Sunday. In addition, we delivered boxes of new hats and socks to local community organizations of Shepherd Staff. Together, we own it, Carroll County Veterans Independence Project, and I'm going to say this in the English version, Connect Us, which is a new group in the area. Much like the student representative said, after the holidays, the giving to local organizations does slow down, which is why we waited and did ours this month. Okay, what are your biggest, most immediate concerns for Carroll County educators, and what thoughts and ideas do you have to address those concerns? I know you cannot answer that right now, and we will have to save that question for when we can sit down and have a conversation, maybe over coffee or hot chocolate, since I don't drink coffee. I can tell you, some of the immediate concerns are for our members. Educators are worried about discipline issues in the classroom that disrupt the education of all students. Students are not always being held accountable for their actions. Please do not misinterpret that. Educators want students suspended for any offense. However, progressive discipline should be used. Referrals should not be brushed under the rug. They're concerned about being physically hit, slapped, punched, kicked by students, having then to fill out workman's comp forms, seeing the workman's comp doctor, and then going right back to the classroom the next day with that very same student in the classroom. They're concerned about their caseload of students needing services, and how there simply are not enough hours in the day, or qualified educators in each school to meet the needs of our students. They are concerned about the amount of paperwork special educators have to complete, and then trying to find time to plan with other educators to help our students be successful. They're concerned about the amount of testing. There are common assessments two times per course in addition to the state mandated testing. What happened to less testing, more teaching? They're concerned about their workload. The job simply cannot be completed during the contractual day. Veteran educators are needing to work several hours per day outside the contractual day in addition to time on the weekends. They're concerned because their home life suffers because of the mental exhaustion from their job, and having to explain to their family that once again, they were physically hurt at their job. They're concerned about the mental health of everyone in CCPS, the students, the staff, the educators, and the administrators. People are struggling. These are not union talking points. These are actual concerns recently shared with me by members, your employees. I have another rhetorical question, but this is for Carroll County in general. Do you value public education? If you do, please contact your commissioner and support the budget proposed by Superintendent McCabe. Please do not think that the idea of class size is increasing is some vague threat. It is a very rare likelihood without additional local funding. About a decade ago, I taught a geometry class of 38 students. When this happened, I asked what was the maximum capacity for a class in CCPS, what it was. And I was told the maximum class size is determined by how many student desks can fit in the classroom. I did move file cabinets out of that room to make 38 fit in. So some things to think about. On a much more pleasant note, CCA is bringing across, bearing back, read across Maryland, and we're very happy that CASE and CCPS is kind of joining up with us to make this event a success. It's going to be on March 25th. I have invitations for you all to read. Commissioner Vigliotti, I didn't know which one was going to be here, so we're going to get you an invitation later. So don't take the top one, just start it down the line, okay? But thank you very much. Okay, and I'll give, I won't approach the dais. I'm going to give it out over here.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Vigliotti. I am Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing LPNs, clericals, lead grant tutors, and assistants across Carroll County Public Schools. I want to begin my remarks this evening by sharing that CASE and CCPS held a joint professional learning day for instructional assistance, paraprofessionals, security assistance, and lead grant tutors on January 27th at Winters Mill High School. Thank you to Jamie Weaver and Jeff Alisakis for their collaboration and extensive efforts to make this day the success it was. I also want to say a public thank you to all CCPS staff who provided the relevant and meaningful sessions that day to help members of our bargaining unit gain even more knowledge to provide the students of our county with the supports they need to be successful and safe. Next year, we're hoping to be able to include our student support assistants, the employees who have some of the closest relationships with our neediest students, so they can get the professional learning that is critical to their positions and that they very much deserve. In the past, clerical members of our bargaining unit have not been able to participate in the professional learning day to the fullest because of the critical and essential services they provide in the daily operations of our buildings. This year, we're looking to change that narrative by providing professional learning for them later in the year to facilitate and encourage their attendance, so they too can have access to much needed and deserved learning. What has been known for several years to those of us in the professions, and was made even more evident during the pandemic, is that education support professionals are essential to the success of our schools. Maryland Senate Bill 831 and House Bill 1349 came about and went into effect July 1st, 2022, to recognize the efforts of education support professionals across Maryland. Part of that legislation included an accounting of ESPs across our state. While many thought that this number would reach more than 30,000, there was quite a shock when actual numbers topped more than 40,000 education support professionals supporting students across the state of Maryland. These essential and dedicated staff members come to work each day, providing whatever services are necessary to help our students succeed. With this budget season upon us and the myriad of guidelines that need to be met because of the requirements of Blueprint for Maryland's future, I ask you to remember these essential employees, many among the lowest paid in our system, who were not included in the blueprint, but who show up every day and in every situation for the students of Carroll County. Thank you.
And on a side note, Commissioner Vigliotti has published several books, and I have two signed books of his. Maybe he could come read one of those?
He's going to get an invitation, but no, I don't think those books children would like.
But I wanted everyone to know that.
I don't think the four-year-old set would enjoy that.
No. I read one about worms, and they liked that one.
Okay, yes.
Okay, but I just wanted to sidebar on that one. Okay, Board Members, we are going to start out with Mr. Whistler tonight. I usually start over to the left, but I'm going to start to the right tonight.
Okay, I appreciate your time. I did, I would like to say that I attended events on January 11th and January 30th to support playground fundraisers for Carrolltown Elementary and Westminster Elementary. I'm so grateful to our county commissioners and our state delegates and senators for supporting these two schools through legislative bond initiatives, now working their way through the Maryland Legislature. Their collaboration with our parents, teachers, and administrators will help us achieve great things for our students and the communities. I also attended two county commissioner town hall events in Southern Carroll County this past month. One on January 17th, hosted by Commissioner Rothstein at the South Carroll Senior Center, and another yesterday, hosted by Commissioner Garin at the Mount Airy Senior Center. I appreciated hearing the community's concerns on how regional development projects affect our schools and our class sizes. Our communities are starting to really understand the impact of Blueprint and what it will have on our class sizes and the potential movement of teachers and other resources across our school system. I do plan to attend a third town hall hosted by Commissioner Gordon at the Westminster Senior Center on February, I'm sorry, March 8th. I'm also the Board's representative to the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative Committee. I participated in numerous meetings and phone calls with board colleagues from across the state. MAB, acting on behalf of our county Boards of Education, will oppose at least two legislative items before the General Assembly. One is House Bill 119, cross filed as Senate Bill 199, Health Education Framework. The bill would erode local Board of Education control and mandate that local jurisdictions adopt the MSDE Health Framework or offer an opt-out provision. This bill might eliminate our ability to offer parents a third age-appropriate option developed locally by our Family Life Advisory Committee. MAB strongly supports the current process of the state developing standards and local boards of education developing the curriculum. This bill, if it passes, would set a precedent of the state legislature legislating content standards, curriculum, and instructional materials. Another key concern is that this bill deviates substantially from existing national health standards issued by the CDC, existing COMAR already aligned with these national health standards. The second bill that MAB, the legislative lobbyist, will oppose on our behalf is House Bill 85, cross filed as Senate Bill 206, collective bargaining of class sizes. This bill would allow employee groups the ability to negotiate the topic of class size and repeal a decades-old exclusion of permitting class size in contract negotiations. MAB opposes adding class size as a plan, as a topic for collective bargaining because it reduces class sizes, and that issue is so closely tied to the planning, timing, and funding of school construction projects. Another concern voiced by MAB relates to the inability of school districts across the state to predict how class sizes will be affected as we implement Blueprint over the coming years. And an issue that we will likely discuss next week relates to Senate Bill 378, minor consent to vaccinations. This bill has not yet been cross filed in the House, but it would allow children as young as 14 to obtain vaccines without a parent's consent. In some cases, it would allow children under the age of 14 the same legal authority. There is a provision that removes a child's right to override a parent's decision. However, an item of major concern is that the bill would prohibit medical staff from releasing vaccine records to a parent or guardian that didn't consent to or had no knowledge of a vaccine. This provision would likely create a burden for schools and create a precedent of keeping information about a child's medical care from a parent or guardian. I also, on a different topic, I met with several business groups over the past, over the past month to promote our school system and ask for their continued support of our students. Our local businesses are great resources to help with student service learning hours, internships for our high schoolers, and post-graduation job opportunities for graduating seniors. Many businesses are eager to connect with our high school students and the Career and Tech Center. And I've urged our business leaders to contact high schools and the Career and Tech Center directly to see how they can make a difference. And then finally, I want to let everyone know that Wednesday, February 15th, is School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. As many know, our SROs play a really important role in ensuring the safety and security of our students and staff. They also serve as role models and contribute to the culture of our schools through their interactions with students. We very much appreciate our SROs and value their tremendous partnership with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office and Carroll County Public School System. So thank you so much.
Dr. Dorsey?
Would you like for me to follow suit?
Yes, please do.
Activities that I have participated in include, on January 13th, I was a part of the Curriculum Council meeting. Our thanks to Mr. Wernick for facilitating our council meeting, and we had a very informative session. We had a presentation on the Elementary Social Studies curriculum by Mr. Bruce Lesh. And we also heard from the gifted and talented academic academics program shared by Mrs. Lilly and two GT staff members. And for now, I only have their first names, Carrie and Bethany, but everyone did a great job in sharing the information. And social studies is going to be one that we're going to be hearing more about over the coming years because of the changes that we're going to be seeing. Also, on the 13th, I had the opportunity to stop by the Technology Center to be a part of the project Lead the Way Senior Class Engineering Design and Development Trade Show. When I said to be a part of, I just walked through and enjoyed all those presentations, and certainly I was very impressed by the work of the teams as they had come up with a problem and then created design, construction, and solution to the problem that they were focusing on. So again, those were very, very well-done projects and very interesting. And we did have a lot of members from the community who came out to be a part of seeing those presentations. And last of all, on that evening, I had wanted to go back to the Technology Center to see the fashion show, but I couldn't get back, but I was able to tune in on the TV to watch the fashion show. And the students really did a beautiful job. Their fashions were wonderful. They were from a number of different categories. And as I watched the fashion show that, that evening, one of the things that really stood out to me was at the very end, how all of the students came out, and they really thanked their teacher, Mrs. Harris. They really showed her much love and appreciation for all that she has invested in them. So again, it was a busy day that day, but it was just great to end with seeing the love that was expressed to Mrs. Harris. On the 18th of January, I was a part of MAB's Board of Directors meeting. We had a full agenda for that day. And later that day, we had our closed session and operating budget hearing. On the 30th of January, I attended MAB's Conference Program Committee meeting. And at that meeting, we began planning for this year's 2023 conference, which is going to be held in October at the Weston in Annapolis. And finally, on January 31st, our Equity Council met here at Central, and our council had the opportunity to meet our new leader, Dr. Moore. And we had the opportunity to hear her entry plan and discuss the role of our county's Equity Action Plan. Areas of focus that we're going to have included this year are student achievement, retention of minorities, and stronger community partnerships. February 1st, we had our budget hearing, followed by a work session. And now I will end by sharing that National School Counseling Week is this week, February 6th through 10th. And this week focuses attention on the unique contributions of school counselors within our school system. This year's theme is school counselors helping students dream big. We recognize school counselors and the tremendous impact they have in helping students achieve school success and emotional well-being, and also planning for college and careers for their futures. Carroll County Public Schools is fortunate to have these dedicated and committed school counselors serving our students.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Ms. Pataglia?
So on January 13th, we had the, there was a delegation in our Maryland Senators' public hearing across the street. Many people had went and attended and spoke about different things for our county. January 18th, we had our budget hearing. January 24th, I attended two of the Career and Technology Center certificate ceremonies. Some great accomplishments, absolutely some great accomplishments for those students. January 26th, we had the Community Advisory Council. Last night, I attended the District 4 Town Hall. Couple upcoming events. We have the Security Advisory Council tomorrow. I'll be attending the Freedom Elementary STEM Night, and I believe that is their 20th STEM evening that they are having there at Freedom Elementary School. We have the County Budget Luncheon coming up, and District 5 Night in Annapolis. Just a couple things going on around the county. I want to send congratulations to Manchester Valley, Francis Scott Key, Liberty, and South Carroll High Schools on earning national qualifiers in the International Thesbian Society, which will take place in Indiana this June. Such achievements are short film, scenic design, solo musical theater, and group musical theater. And I have to say, the girl from Manchester Valley that sung the solo musical theater, it was a song from Phantom of the Opera, and when she sang it, I, I got goosebumps. It was so powerful. She was just incredible. And I, she played the fairy godmother last year for Cinderella, and she is phenomenal, and I cannot wait to see what she does in, you know, going on in life, you know, in arts and theater. She was just incredible. So I'm excited to see she's going to Nationals and also group musical theater. So if you can, contact these schools, reach out to their performing arts, and see if you can help donate. They do need the funds to help with these students going to Nationals, and I believe it's $1,000 a student. So a lot of these kids are seniors, some are juniors. So yeah, just help out if you can. This weekend, Hack- This weekend, Hackney Haunts is having a one-night Valentine Haunt. Which, I don't know if I'm going to go. Might be a little creepy for me. But Creepy Jason, who owns a local tattoo shop here in Hampstead, is going to be featured there. If anybody's ever seen him, he's been on a couple tattoo competitions. But go check out Hackney Haunts. They do a lot for our community, too. They do donate funds back. On a personal level, on January 25th, my family and I attended a service at Arlington National Cemetery to place my grandmother's ashes with my grandfather. My two oldest children were very little the last time we had went to visit my grandfather's site, and it's when my grandmother was alive. Having not been there for so many years, that sacred ground is a reminder of the thousands that have fought and died for our freedoms. A few steps away from my grandfather's site, you can actually see very clearly where the plane flew into the Pentagon on 9/11. As you turn around, you see a thousand of tombstones that are strategically in line remembering the souls that fought and earned the honor to be remembered there by their country. If you have never been, go. Go with your family. Learn the history. Visit the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Visit the final resting place of John F. Kennedy. Read the plaques and pay your respects to those you did not know but gave us the freedoms that we love. And with that, also, Valentine's Day is right around the corner, so share something with someone you love. Even if you don't love them, share something. And when there's kisses outside, too, so spread the love. Take a kiss, give a kiss. So Career and Technology Education Month, February is Career and Technology Education Month. CTE prepares students with technology, academic, and employable skills for success in the workplace and in further education. These programs provide a range of opportunity for students to learn technical skills, earn college credit, and acquire industry certifications by completing a sequence of courses in their area of interest. Thanks to the outstanding efforts of our teachers and students, our CTE programs continue to be recognized for excellence in Maryland and across the nation. And Instructional Assistance Day. Our schools will be celebrating Instructional Assistance Day on Wednesday, February 27th. This day is set aside to recognize the efforts of our instructional assistants and paraprofessionals who helped to provide a quality education for our students. The members of the Board of Education and I would like to take, thank these dedicated and hard-working employees for all they do for our students and teachers. They are an important part of the instructional team, and their work is invaluable in maintaining the higher educational standards of our school system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Savigny.
Thank you, President Herbert. I'm just going to keep my comments really short. I did attend, you know, the other Board of Ed functions that were previously mentioned, like public hearings and workshops about the budget, all those types of items. But the, the significant thing for me this past month had, has been the sheer number of questions that have come out from the community. There have been a lot of people just reaching out by phone, by email, trying to understand the blueprint, the impact that it's going to have. What does this mean for the county? You know, how are we working with the commissioners? All of those types of things. And also, a lot of follow-up questions on the items that you had mentioned, Mr. Whistler, from the legislative session. Specifically, a lot of questions on House Bill 119, cross-bill, cross-fired as Senate Bill 199, also the Senate Bill 378. So I'm glad to see that we do have a legislative update later on the schedule. I would like to be able to provide some additional comments of things that I've heard from the community. And also, it's, we've begun preparing for the Family Life Advisory Committee meeting. The next meeting is actually tomorrow. So there have been several questions from that group as well about House Bill 119 and how that could potentially impact the school system. So I'm looking forward to that discussion a little bit later. And with that, I will also say it is Gifted and Talented Education Month. February is Gifted and Talented Education Month. CCPS offers programs to meet the instructional needs of all students, including our most highly able learners and those students who demonstrate gifted learning traits. The Advanced Academics Program is continually being improved and expanded to identify student talent and extend students' learning experiences. Thank you to all of our gifted and talented Advanced Academics teachers for the work they do to build the program and enrich the instructional experiences of our students on a daily basis.
Thank you. I've been out and about, and you've all seen me. That's not the important thing. I do want to tell you, though, I did go to Lead the Way, and it was hot as the devil, and it was packed. But there was one, one site that I really liked. These two gentlemen had taken a lawnmower and had the side where it flips up and down, where the amount of throw it has for, for the grass. But they made it for if you hit a rock. The only problem was, when I get on a lawnmower, I go. That thing would never be able to work fast enough to go open, close, open, close. So, boys, you got to work on that a little bit. But it was, it was really nice, all those Project Lead the Way. So I just would just probably just leave it open. So anyway. Now, to piggyback on Donna and making comments, and we've been having a lot of questions, as Board President, it is important for me to clarify for the public any statements that are made outside of a board meeting by a board member. Board decisions are made in public, here. Open sessions, except for those items that are discussed in closed sessions, such as information related to specific personnel, litigation, and collective bargaining. Board decisions are made when there is a quorum of the board. Further, the board operates by a majority vote. It happens that sometimes outside of a board meeting, a board member will give members of his, of the public his or her own opinion on a topic of education interest. That can occur when the board member is talking with a friend or in front of groups of citizens or on social media. What the public needs to know is that those opinions are opinions of that particular board member, not the board. Every board member has opinions on educational issues. None of us come to the board meeting with empty heads, and that is for sure. But only when the board votes is the board supporting a particular decision or issue. The board is not responsible for statements made by board members outside of board meetings, and the public should not assume that a board member's personal opinions expressed outside of the board meetings reflect the decisions of the Carroll County Board of Education. Thank you. And now we will move on. All right. And we will have the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Artwork by two seniors at Liberty High School has been selected for the Fall/Winter BWI Student Exhibit sponsored by the Maryland Art Education Association. Congratulations to Erin Buddy, an AP 2D Art and Design student, and Gillian Casey, a student in honors Digital Media Art and Design. Their art teacher is Lauren Latney-Velice. The artwork will be on display in the Observation Gallery at BWI until April or May and was featured on the front page of the Carroll County Times last week. And now I would like to take a moment to highlight a very successful partnership between CETV Channel 21, the Technology Services Department, and the Career and Technology Center. Staff members have worked together to establish a connection between the control room in the video production classroom at the Tech Center and the Channel 21 Control Room at Central Office. With this enhanced technology, we now have the ability to broadcast and livestream events from the Tech Center while giving the video production students valuable hands-on experience in their field. Just in the past few weeks, we were able to share the Tech Center's fashion show and award ceremonies with the community. These programs may be found on the CCPS YouTube channel. We are very excited to have this capability and look forward to the opportunities it will provide us in the future. And finally, February is Black History Month, and our schools are celebrating the achievements of African-Americans and their contributions to the history of our nation. Individual schools are holding many activities throughout the month. You can find a sampling of these activities on our website, and photos and videos are being posted throughout the month on Facebook and Twitter.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we will not have any presentations, but we are going to remove, move right on to reports. And the first one is School Construction Report. Ms. McCabe.
For the monthly construction report, there is one item to note. During the bid review process for the Westminster High School window replacement project, testing revealed that exterior window caulk contains PCBs. We are delaying the project to better understand requirements for addressing PCBs. Neither the EPA nor MDE offer conclusive guidance. We will reconsider the project after we have more time to determine the proper process.
Mr. Marx, come on down. Ms. Savigny.
Oh, my God.
I know it already. I can feel it. I saw the look.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Marx. So I gave you a reprieve for, I think it was two straight meetings that I didn't ask any questions.
Thoroughly enjoyed. Thank you very much.
So I couldn't let a third one go by without asking some questions. Sorry about that. So, so, you know, the two big projects that have been on the list for quite some time now are Career and Tech and Westminster East Middle School replacement. We know with inflation, with inflation very high, you know, those, those projects are very tight on fitting in with the budget that was allotted for those projects. I was just wondering if you could give us an update on where we stand with that.
So far, so good. We're, we're under budget on both projects. Like we had said, there's a lot of savings that had to go into play for both to make them happen. But we feel we're fine right now.
Okay. Well, that's fantastic news. Okay. And then just a follow-up question on the, the window replacement. We had a certain amount allotted in the, the capital improvement plan, right?
Correct.
Do we think that with all of these newly-found issues, that we're going to potentially exceed that?
Yes, that was the, and that was the ultimate factor, that the additional items that, we haven't, we haven't received all the information yet of what we have to do.
Okay.
But what we do know was already exceeding our budget and our timeline of doing the project. It basically took the scope and just threw it in the trash. We really have to rethink how we're going to do this now, going forward with funding and how we're going to do it in the summers. It might be multiple summer projects. You know, we'll have to have talks with the states because you, you know that the Healthy Schools Fund was funding their side of this. So that's expiring money. But they're helping us. They're working with us. So there's a lot of talks that have to happen to make this work.
Okay. Okay. So that bid process will be delayed and we'll probably see some correction factors in the new CIP plan for this year.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
No problem. Have a good night.
And now we will move on to the Blueprint Implementation.
We now have a working draft of our blueprint plan prepared. Mr. O'Neill will provide a brief update on our process.
Thank you and good evening. My brief update is the, we did meet our benchmark of finishing a working draft of our plan. It is posted on your public website under Board of Ed and then Blueprint. It's available to anyone in the public. We also did specifically send it out to some of the key stakeholder groups and to try to solicit their very particular feedback. There is a, on your website, there is an email address or like a feedback link, and if people click on that, they can provide feedback very specific to the blueprint at that address. And we remain on a timeline to have this plan to the state as required by March 15. And between now and then, we'll have to make whatever revisions there are. And we have a, sort of a county-by-county, there's a, there's a county-by-county process where we'll have a Carroll County meeting with the state to review what we've submitted in the plan. It is extensive. It's a couple hundred pages without clicking on all of the linked artifacts for, for many of the items and also reviewing them. Our friend and colleague, Mr. Curtis, told me he read it in about an afternoon, so it can be done for anyone who, who would like to. That was a joke. He did not tell me that.
Oh, wow. I was impressed.
And it's, you know, it's a, it's a tight timeline. There's a lot of moving parts. The superintendent remains committed to sharing it with you in each iteration, to have discussion, to solicit feedback. At the end of the day, the superintendent still has to submit it to the state, you know, regardless of where everything stands. And we tried, we have tried to share with the, the stakeholder groups that we reached out to specifically that there's, there's a tight window here. So this year, you may offer all the meaningful feedback in the world, and we will do our best to consider it, but we may not be able to, to work with all of it. However, every year, we'll do this plan, so there's, there's always the opportunity for modifications over time. So I'll, I'll pause there. I'll take any questions.
Ms. Savigny.
You know, I have a lot of them, right? I just wanted to make a general comment, like, so clearly, this is a very large and comprehensive document. I, I was not able to get through all of it in the allotted time since we received it before tonight. I did try to kind of go through it at a high level, trying to, try to understand what the impacts are. I, I guess the, the one, you know, a couple of pieces of guidance that I would provide are, I think, at this point, less is more. I, there, we, there are a lot of pieces in this document that we're kind of committing to things, and I think we might actually be over-committing to things. So, so one of, one of the comments that I had was on page six, where we start talking about, this is about the, the pre-K piece, where available, I'll just read the one paragraph. It says, "Available classroom space is also an issue at many of our current elementary schools. To ensure we have space for all eligible four-year-olds, we are working with our CCPS Facilities Department to support the building of additional classrooms at each elementary school." That sounds to me like we're committing to building additional classrooms at every elementary school. And I would say that we, we can't do that, not unless the state were to provide all the funding necessary to do that. So I'm a little bit worried about how some of these things are worded in here and what we're potentially committing ourselves to that we can't follow through on. So that, that's just one piece. And, and I'm hoping that, you know, as we have a little bit more time to, to read through this over the next week or two, if we can provide additional feedback on things that we may see.
Absolutely. Okay. It is a hard read. It, it is. And some of the things that, that are in there are very strategic. And I cannot thank you all enough for doing this because this was not an easy go for any of you. This is all new, and I thank you for all this hard work because that was astronomical. It was gigantic. So I, I thank you again for working on that, for everyone that put their two cents in because...
Absolutely. I mean, yeoman's work, and, and thanks to everyone for doing that.
Yes, I really appreciate that.
This has not been easy on anyone, clearly.
Dr. Dorsey.
Again, I'd like to thank you all for the hard work with this. And it's very thoughtful, and I have read the whole thing. I found it easier just to lift off each pillar and go through each pillar at a time. And as I was going through the pillars, I was looking at the writing style of some of those leaders because some of it is, is very, all of it's very specific, but some of it where they could, where you could bullet items. I found that that was a little bit of an easier read when you just sort of bulleted responses to the questions. And I do think that you've been honest in sharing what the challenges are in each pillar, and I think that's very important. And, you know, what you had just brought up, Mrs. Savigny, about the classroom spaces for the preschool, well, I see that as a part of the challenges that, you know, are really being addressed here. So I don't know whether, you know, we can make it clear that, again, it is a challenge to make sure that these spaces would be available, but it's certainly something that we're working on. So again, I just think it's, it's very well-done and so many things that I had, you know, sort of lost sight of in the system. Boy, just to pick this document up now, I, I know where I can find all of the information about, you know, if I'm looking for the, the mental health and, you know, all the resources that are available to help our students in that area. You know, everything is just very specific, and it's included here. So I was just very, very impressed. So just thank you. And for each of the leaders, for each of those pillars, I think they, you've all done a wonderful job with this.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you both. I'll pass all that gratitude to the, to the folks who are, who are leading the effort, as the pillar leaders and a lot of other people who added to this. And, you know, we, we are aware that there may be different writing styles. We're not, we're not sure we'll have enough time to sort of synthesize those into one. We're open to any and all feedback, whether it's specific suggestions, sort of structural approaches, like you just laid out, Dr. Dorsey. sort of structural approaches, like you just laid out, Dr. Dorsey, language syntax. And you can get it to us however you want, whether it's in an email or just your handwritten notes. And we'll take them and run from there and we'll do our best. To your point, Dr. Dorsey, as a reminder, I know we said this a couple of meetings ago, the template came from the state. So, you know, the overall structure is not ours. Every county had the same template. The template was just about 100 pages. And then, we are, by the state's rule, limited to no more than another 100 pages. So, it can't be more than 200 pages of the document itself. That doesn't include the linked artifacts and the other, you know, the other data tables. So, we're trying to be succinct and we're trying to take the approach that this is the baseline year. So, for better or worse, we're telling you what we're doing now. And then, we'll build from there, you know, hopefully with our partners at the state over the 10-year window of the blueprint. And we'll see how that goes.
And again, the other piece that I wanted to bring out when I was talking about the challenges, I mean, even with reading about how, you know, all elementary schools, each school should have a math resource teacher, how beneficial that would be. So, as I was going through, I was really seeing, you know, a number of challenges that I think you're right, just to point out to the state that, you know, here's where we are and here are some of the challenges that we're facing. And hopefully, they'll take a look at that and see if they can provide some input with helping us to overcome those challenges.
We would, I think I can speak for the superintendent. We would welcome their input on how we can, how we can work to overcome those challenges. And we would welcome them here to work with us in our smaller groups as we try to sort our way through those challenges. So, that's on the table as well.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, you don't have to go anywhere because you're going to do the legislative update. Thank you. And by the way, I just want to let everybody know, prior to COVID, we used to have this. This is nothing new. He would appear and stand every January through May. And Mr. O'Neil would give us a legislative update. And I think some people were very shocked to see that. But it's not a new thing. We have been doing this for a long time. It's just like COVID got in the way and this is just one more thing to be normal, to get to normalcy again. Thank you.
Sure. And we're happy to do that. And our Board of Ed members historically have always been very active in their participation on the MAAB Legislative Committee for this board. That's President Herbert and Mr. Whistler, who are the members, our members on the MAAB Legislative Committee. The MAAB Committee meets throughout, regularly throughout the General Assembly. And the superintendent, of course, is active in the Superintendent's Association and they have their own lobbying function in Annapolis. And so, where we are now, it's hard to believe because there's already some, I looked, I think yesterday, and there were like 800 and some Senate bills and 700 and some House bills. But we're not yet to the bill filing deadline. I think February 10 is the filing deadline in the House. And we're certainly not to cross over date where bills that pass one body have to be submitted to the committees in the opposite chamber. But there are many, many bills filed. MAAB tracks many more bills than the ones that we have in the tracking report here for the sake of efficiency for this discussion. I just highlighted a few that have been heard recently or that the MAAB Legislative Committee has discussed recently. It's certainly things we have our eye on. And Mr. Whistler and his board member activities correspondent has touched on some of those. So, I won't repeat. And obviously, Mrs. Herbert and Mr. Whistler are at those MAAB meetings and may feel free to share whatever perspectives they have as well. Most of the budget update you got at the last, the impact of the state budget on the operating budget you got at the last work session following the last hearing. The capital budget looks really good. Of course, our two major projects are already underway and already towards a funding path. But for the example, the Westminster High Window Replacement and what that might mean, the governor earmarked more money for the traditional CIP, more money to complete the commitment to the Build to Learn Act, which is the funding we used, applied for East Middle, and more money for the, is Jim still here? The Healthy Schools Fund, which is the money that the state used, awarded us for the Westminster High Project. So, and I think the governor put an additional 90 million in for that. So, hopefully, there will be funding there to move that project forward again once we have a little more clarity. That's all I'll share. I'll be happy to take questions or comments.
Comments? Ms. Savigny.
I did, thank you for that update, Mr. O'Neil. I do know that, you know, there were lots of questions from folks in the community. And Mr. Whistler, you had made some remarks during board correspondence about some of these. But just House Bill 119, the, you had basically said, it's going to erode local control even further. It erodes parents' rights. It's not in alignment with the national health standards that were developed by the CDC. So, today, COMAR, the health framework and those standards align with the national standards developed by the CDC. But the new bill actually proposes to deviate from those national standards. So, and it deviates away from it being skills-based, research- and science-based curriculum, which is what the health framework is supposed to be based on. It's supposed to be skills-based and based on research and science. So, it's a significant issue. And this is, this particular bill is political activism cloaked as health education. And so, I'm glad to hear, and it really does erode local control. So, I'm glad to hear that MAAB is loudly opposing this particular bill. So, Mr. Whistler, can you give some updates on the MAAB? So, was it all jurisdictions for MAAB?
No, there were, there were a few jurisdictions that abstained from the voting.
There were two.
Two. I thought there were three. Okay, two.
It might have been, but...
Okay.
Yeah. But essentially, the vast majority of the Boards of Education opposed the initiative. And again, the major concern was that this bill would set a very unique precedent of legislators in Annapolis legislating curriculum, legislating standards, where typically, standards are done at MSD and then the local jurisdictions then develop the curriculum based off those standards. So, the very, the very big concern was that the legislature was kind of, you know, going in the new territory here that MAAB Legislative Committee thought was very, very dangerous.
Okay.
And Dr. No, who we all know is John Woolhams, is MAAB's, one of their lead attorneys. And he was down there and he did testify against that for MAAB. Yes. And he does a fantastic job.
The House bill was heard on February 1, I believe, in Ways and Means. The sponsor of the bill is the Chair of Ways and Means. The Senate Cross File was heard today, but it was heard, it was heard on the 1 o'clock hearing schedule. But the bill was not called until after you had convened for closed session this afternoon. So, like Nick and I weren't able to watch the hearing today. The hearing in the House was not long or involved in any way, at least by some standards of a bill hearing. And there was very little, there was very little discussion among the members of the Ways and Means Committee that day. Couple of questions for some of the presenters and not much more than that.
Okay. I mean, is there a way to create sort of an educational camp or an informational campaign for people so that they understand what this is? And do we need to send a message or communicate with our local delegates to say, you know, this board, if we so decided to say that we don't support this as a group, to deliver that message to our delegates officially or...
Yes, we can.
Because I think we need to improve our communication and efforts together in Annapolis with our delegates. So, I think if we feel strongly about this as a board, I would recommend that we take a vote on providing feedback to our delegates as a board.
And you may do that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You may do that multiple ways. You may have us create documentation for you or we could certainly inform our delegation of MAAB. MAAB makes all of its testimonies on every bill available on their websites. So, the House Bill 119 testimony is there. The Senate Bill 199, I'm sure, will be there within 24, 48 hours. So, we can also, just via email, send the delegation directly to that information. And certainly, many of them have been there a while and they know Mr. Woolhams and have access to him.
Absolutely. They know John very well. So, do you think that would be the best way to do that?
It certainly would be the quickest way if it's the will of the sport to get that information to them.
Then, do we need a motion then to, or just? Yes, by?
By consensus. Okay. Do we have consensus?
I do believe so. Yes, Dr. Dorsey.
Well, I was going to say, and that's something the state legislators have really asked us for, you know, just to be in touch with them concerning issues that we would like for them to be aware of and to help us address.
Yeah, our legislators are really working hard down there. They really are. And there's a lot on their plate. And we appreciate everything they can do for education. Ms. Savigny, go ahead.
And I did want to make an additional couple of comments about Senate Bill 378. Because I'm concerned about, I wanted to ask some questions. This is the one about minor children being able to get vaccinations without parental consent. And I have significant concerns with that. If, you know, how do we partner with the local health department? If we promote or if we provide vaccinations in some way through the school system in conjunction with the health department and then, like, and that's against a parent's wishes? There could potentially be a legal liability there. You know, it's loss of trust of the community. I'm concerned that I would, if we do have some connection with the health department in providing those vaccinations, I believe that we should stop, depending on how this bill comes down.
Ms. McCabe.
So, at this point, we have given flu vaccines for the health department to our students, to the student who, whose parents asked for us to do that. So, we have always gotten parent permission to, for the student to participate in that program. You know, my guess is that we would continue to get parent permission as a normal part of the process of us giving any kind of vaccination.
Okay. So, we wouldn't partake in providing a vaccination to a student who didn't have parental consent?
We have never done that in the past. And at this point, we, I mean, of course, we haven't talked about it. But I can't imagine a point in time where we would give a student a vaccination without a parent permission.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, I sort of hate to admit this, but I think some of the genesis for this is that vaccination status has affected funding in some jurisdictions. And so, that's a bit of a hot topic in those jurisdictions. I don't have any belief that that's ever been a concern here. The bill isn't scheduled for hearing yet. So, I think it would be discussed at probably Monday's MAAB Legislative Committee to have a little more detail and follow up after that.
Mr. Whistler.
Yeah, I've had a discussion with John and we do plan to talk about it at least briefly. But my concern is, and again, I'd love to hear from the staff, what kind of burdens do you think that would put on our school system with regards to safeguarding records, the exposure of risk if, for say, you have a divorced couple and mom doesn't want dad to know or the kid doesn't want mom and dad to know and we let them know by mistake? I mean, does this bill present a tremendous burden on school systems? What are your thoughts on that?
Ms. McCabe.
Since COVID, you know, we have, we have been very sensitive to the workload that any kind of health procedure puts on our staff, especially our nursing staff. And so, we have had multitudes of opportunities to take part in different grant opportunities and state opportunities as far as health services go. And we have turned them down mainly because of the workload it imposed on our employees. And so, we know that our folks are working as hard as they can. And to add another layer on at this point would not be possible for our employees, especially our nurses. So, that's one of the main reasons that we have, we have said no to many opportunities that have come our way in the health field.
And again, this is not just COVID. This is any vaccine.
Exactly.
So, this is not specifically a COVID issue.
Right.
But what really troubles me the most is that we would be under the gun to keep secrets from parents with regards to a medical issue. If a child wants to get a vaccine and mom and dad says no, obviously, there's provision that the child can't override the no. But I'm just really concerned that we're going to be put in the middle of keeping secrets from parents about a medical issue. And if we're doing it with this issue, what's the next issue? And that's really the dangerous precedent that I see being set.
And we should never do that.
Never keep a secret from parents on any issue.
Yes, absolutely.
And Annapolis shouldn't even be contemplating this. Because, I mean, it just opens up very dangerous doors. So, even though I don't know that that's necessarily a bill that we're tracking from a, like, an impact on the school system perspective, I think it could potentially very much have an impact on the school system. So, I think we should again give our feedback to our delegates.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. At this time, I need, moving on to action items, I need a motion for the approval of personnel appointments.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Mr. Whistler. Ms. McCabe, you're on again.
I am recommending two appointments for your approval this evening. The first one is Kristin Cavee from School Counselor at Winters Mill High School to Pupil Personnel Worker, where we've had a retirement. The second position is Bryn Felice from Coordinator of Early Intervention, Special Education, Birth Through Five, to Supervisor of Special Education Elementary.
Comments? Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Action Items, 6B, by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Savigny. Ms. McCabe.
On the monthly Personnel Action Items, there are four new hires, one retired, rehired retiree, one released from contract, three broken contracts, and two leaves of absence.
Comments? Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now, we're going to move on to 6C. And for this item, we are going to require three motions and votes by the board. I'm sure the superintendent has some comments. I know I have some comments and background information. So, I need a motion for the approval of the FY '24 Operating Fund Budget and Request for County Funding.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia and seconded by Mr. Whistler. He was looking right at me. Yes, he was. He was on the move. All right. Mr. Burke.
So, before Mr. Burke comes up, I'll just say a couple of things. We've reached the point in the annual budget process where the budget I proposed to you last month now becomes yours to adopt. At this point in the process, we've had a December work session, a discussion on my proposed budget at the January meeting, a discussion at a joint meeting with the commissioners, two public hearings, and one additional work session where we reviewed my proposed budget and focused on updated revenue from the state. This evening, you will vote on a budget that will become your request to the county commissioners as part of their public budget process. Of note, we will have our agency hearing with the commissioners on the afternoon of February 23. We have staff here in case you wish to make any adjustments to the budget as I proposed it to you. Also, and President Herbert made mention of this, when you vote, you must vote on the major categorical totals of the operating budget, the Food Services Program budget, and the Debt Service budget separately. So, we will be asking you to call each motion and vote individually. During our process, the discussion tends to focus more on expected or requested revenue totals and planned expenditures. In light of that, I will ask our CFO, Mr. Burke, to share the revenue and expenditure information once more and then show you how they are reflected in the categorical totals.
And I'm going to piggyback on this one first because I have a little thing here to rouse the troops up. Parents, it is time for you all to wake up. And you really need to listen to this tonight very carefully for what I'm about to say. Blueprint is going to drastically change Carroll County Public Schools as we see it now. And it is a well-oiled machine. Look at our academic achievements. But you must pay attention. We do need your help. If we don't get the funding we need, this school system is going to look completely different in two years. And the changes we will see will come at the cost of your children's education. Before I go on, Blueprint is mandated by the State of Maryland. We are legally required to follow it. We do not have a choice. We will be allocating resources, including teachers, from one area of the county to another. So Dr. Dorsey made mention of a math resource teacher in every school. That will not happen if we do not get the funding we need from the county commissioners. I promise you that, and that is a sad state of affairs. This means that many of you will be, be experiencing fewer resources and larger class sizes. And that is not what we have had in Carroll County, large class sizes. Some schools will benefit greatly, but it will come at the cost of shifting resources, which means some schools will suffer. You all are smart enough to figure out what schools will suffer. I can tell you now that your child will be affected, and you're not going to like it, you're going to be upset, but I'm telling you, the time is now to act. We need to do something now before this happens. We need your support more than ever. And I even talked to CAC a couple of weeks ago, and I said, you need to help us support this Board of Education and the public school system and the teachers. They, we need the parents to support us 100%. I am asking for parents to contact our county commissioners, ask them for the funding we need. You can email them, you can write them, you can call them, you can attend their meetings. They need to hear from you. But if we, as a group of parents, do not contact them, we will not get that funding. We cannot do this alone. We need your help, Carroll County parents. I can't stress this enough. If you don't want to see this school system look completely different in two years, you need to call, contact Carroll County Commissioners. We have an outstanding school system. All of you sitting in here have done a wonderful job. Most people come to Carroll County because of the school system and what you all accomplish in this room. This will not be the case if we do not get the funding we need, and your child will no longer attend one of the top schools in the state of Maryland. You have the opportunity to stop this from happening, but you have to act now. Thank you. I hope I got my point across.
Ms. Herbert, would I be able to add a couple of?
You certainly may. Sorry, Mr. Burke, but you're not in the center of attention right for the moment, but we do need parental, we do need parental help. We need their backing. Go ahead.
I, Ms. Herbert, I wholeheartedly agree with everything you just said. The one thing that I would like to add to it, and this is for Commissioner Vigliotti's sake, we are, we are certainly not berating the commissioners in any way. We are, we are berating the state in the fact, the way that they have put these mandates together and not provided the funding in a way that needed to be provided in order to not negatively impact several school systems across the state is what is the cause of the problem. We don't have any recourse at the state level, and therefore, we are forced to come in your direction. It's not your fault, we're not yelling at you. We are simply asking for your help in an untenable situation that the state has put us in, so that we do not destroy the best performing school system in the state. So just.
Well said. Mr. Whistler?
Yeah, again, I'd like to also add, again, well said by everyone so far, but I really want, look, I'm a big manage expectations kind of person, and I think parents really need to understand that even if we get all the funding we want from the commissioners, the way Blueprint is structured, the way the spending buckets are set, the way we have to spend the resources, we will probably see massive changes in our school system as it relates to teacher resources at various schools across this county. And so that's really something that we really need to make sure parents also understand. Blueprint is law, we are required to do it. It has grant-based funding, grant-based funding buckets that requires us to spend money on certain categories of learners. So parents really need to get connected, stay connected, and not hold malice to any elected official, because, trust me, I've had discussions with commissioners, state delegates, state senators, and my colleagues. This is something that we all need to work through. It's coming, and we're going to work through it the best we can and do the best with what we've got. So, you know, we're only starting to implement Blueprint. More changes are coming in fiscal years down the road. So I just urge parents to get involved, stay connected, and to understand why changes are happening, and they're changing not because we want them to, but, but because we are required to by law.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia?
Mr. Vigliotti, I'll just say, on your way home, can you swing by Boggers and see if they started growing money trees? Kind of lighten it up a little bit.
Ms. Dorsey?
Well, I would just like to encourage everyone to be supportive of this budget, and again, it is going to take all of us, making our desires and our requests known, you know, getting in touch with the commissioners. We need our parent groups to be involved in that, even for citizens without children in the school system. I think they need to, you know, get involved at this point, too, to see what we're actually dealing with. So it's going to take all of us working together, and I, I guess the bottom line is, even with what we're asking, just to know that there's a whole lot more we could be asking for. So again, I think it's, it's pretty streamlined at this point, and, you know, I can think of other items that could be added, but again, you know, it's all going to depend on the actual funding. I know a group that we haven't looked at or heard from in the past, our, our English Language Learning Program. I mean, we have a number of additional students in that program now, and I understand we're still operating with a staff that we've had for a number of years. I think back in the early 2000s, that staff has remained the same. So again, we could probably each go down the line and, and talk about other items that we'd like to see added, but again, we'll go with this as our, as our proposed budget at this point, and just know that it's going to take all of us to encourage the commissioners to actually fund it for us.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Burke?
Okay. Good evening, board members. Going to touch on a few summary slides, sort of a pared-down version of what we've seen over the last month or so with the board budget presentations and work sessions. So just going to highlight a few things. Our revenue summary for fiscal year '24, this sort of represents new revenues available to us if, if funding levels come in where we're requesting. So this is the non-restricted funds, that's what we're focusing on. So the number we had talked about previously, state revenue, this is sort of the revenue growth from Blueprint and enrollment. This does not include the compensatory ed. I'll hit on that in a minute. The requested amount from the county at 13.4 million, a few other adjustments. So about 26.5 million of new revenues available to meet the demands of the system. You'll recall, the county's most recently adopted operating plan includes about 6.7 million in increased ongoing revenue for the school system. The county has not yet begun their public budget process, so they'll be working through that over the next, you know, several months. Our request is an additional 6.7 million on top, or a total of 13.4 in ongoing revenues for the next year. A summary of the increases in spending being identified for that funding, I'll hit on a little more detail on that in a minute. Again, this is the non-restricted portion. So we've talked about that. These needs haven't changed as we've worked through the budget process. Little more detail on what's included in those, again, between inflationary, Blueprint, wage inflation, working with our bargaining units on negotiations. These are our identified expenditures. You'll recall, we've discussed the new compensatory education funding. That 11.2 million I've indicated there will include as, as restricted, and so the revenues and expenditures identified that will be identified and restricted for us, and we'll come back to the board when we're at, you know, closer to adoption of budget time to, to identify what that program and where those dollars will be directed. So although we adopt the budgets combined, I first wanted to show a breakout of the non-restricted from the restricted. So the restricted on the right is your, is primarily grants, federal-funded grants, state-funded grants, and this includes the compensatory ed money in there as well. So again, these are restricted on the right. The non-restricted on the left column there, that's the categorical totals as it breaks out for all the various programs. So total, local, some current use of fund balance, state revenues, some other identified The compensatory ed spending is identified in category 16. That's sort of a non-salary category for us. We will come back and revisit that with the board and allocate that into the proper categories when we have that plan in place. Here it is, is as we will consider for adoption. Total revenue, total expenditure budget, 429,179,260. Categorical totals as it's required. So if you want to take them one by one, after, next slide, I'll move into the other budgets that we'll consider tonight. So if you have any questions, available for that.
Yep, we have to do one at a time. Yes, we already have a motion. Does anybody have any other comments? All right. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now I need a motion for the approval of the FY24 Food Service Fund Budget.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey.
Just a brief summary of the food service budget. You'll recall, this is a self-supporting fund, so various revenues there, primarily federal grants and the student fees, you know, the family cost involved in supporting food service. This is the expected budget for fiscal year '24. This does not include any planned adjustment to the student or family fee for, for purchasing lunches.
Ms. Sevigny?
Thank you. Mr. Burke, just a quick question about the, the funds that students put in for the cost of lunches. Do you know how much of that comprises the 9.6 million total?
Don't have that breakdown in front of me right now.
I don't, I didn't need, like, explicit dollars. I was just thinking if it was, you know, 75% or, you know, something like that in terms of, if you've got various different funds. So just trying to understand how much of it is funded by?
So about 4.3 in revenues that aren't grant-funded, so something less than half.
Okay, okay. Just a little less than half is from, okay. Just trying to understand, you know, if, if we're not, so, but you said we're definitely not making any changes to the cost of breakfast and lunches for the upcoming year.
Right. This budget does not contemplate an increase in those fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now I need a motion for the approval of the FY24 Debt Service Fund Budget. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Sevigny.
A similar slide here to represent the summary of the debt service budget. This is the county-funded contribution toward repayment of debt, toward paying off county bonds. So for us, this is sort of a non-cash recognition of that payment on the, by the county, 12,721,000 in fiscal year '24.
Comments? Questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And Mr. Burke, I would like to thank you and your group back there, Drew, and, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but anyway. Her name?
Susan Harrison. Drew, we'll get to her in a minute.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, anyway, I just want to thank everyone for working on this budget because this is a full-time job plus, doing Blueprint and everything else. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. It's a team, team effort, and I appreciate your recognizing. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would like a motion for the approval to retain independent auditor FY23.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Whistler.
By state law, each year, we must have an independent audit completed on our financial transactions and accounts. I'm recommending that you renew the annual contract with Clifton Larson Allen to complete the FY23 audit.
Questions? Comments? All right. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of award of bids. By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Sevigny?
There are three items on the award of bids. The first is stage equipment replacement for Westminster High School, Francis Scott Key High School, and Liberty High School. We conducted an inspection of our stage equipment at the high schools through a qualified agency. It was determined that the equipment at these three schools, which had older equipment, needs to be replaced to bring it to a more appropriate safety and operational standard. This purchase will be funded through the local CIP Infrastructure Renewal Project, which the board created using your own fund balance. This project will deplete the CIP account, and we will be bringing a budget request at the conclusion of the budget process so that you can replenish the account. Number two, wall wrapping services. This contract is used by both food services and maintenance to apply graphics to walls, floors, or vehicles as needed. And thirdly, vehicle lifts for the Career and Tech Center. This award is to provide four vehicle lifts to the Career and Tech Center Heavy Equipment Program. The purchase is being made through grant money.
All right. Ms. Sevigny?
Can we take these one at a time?
Sure.
That makes sense. So the, the stage rigging, this is a, this is a big price tag, and I don't recall ever seeing this in, in any of our planning documents. So just trying to understand how that came about, and do we, if, and especially if it's going to fully deplete the, the maintenance account, do we want to do all of the alternatives that are, that are listed?
So, yeah, to answer the questions in reverse order, yes, we do, and I'll try to explain why. So this isn't an item that's in your facility's master plan, it's not an item that shows up in the state CIP process, it's not an item that even shows up, I believe this is accurate, and Ray can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not even part of the state facilities inspection process. You get, that, that information shows up here at the board level annually in terms of the.
of the comprehensive maintenance plan and that sort of thing. It is an item that, that arose out of conversations at some of the MAB coordinated meetings of facilities folks, and MAB is also our insurer and the insurer for most of the boards, the majority of the boards of that in Maryland. And it's, it's sort of one of those gray areas that was recognized, well, you know, the state inspections sort of deal with the brick and mortar and the structure of the building. So just to be honest and blunt, there really was or is no inspection process that looks specifically at this equipment and this location and says, is this equipment at industry standard? Is it not? Are there safety concerns? Are there functional concerns? And in fact, no, no one on our staff has the expertise to sort of undertake that. And so we engaged, and it's my understanding that other school systems also have done this, we engaged with a, with a consulting firm that, that does have that expertise and had them come in and look at all the high schools. And in some ways, it's not surprising that the three schools identified are the older, older schools which have the less, the least modern equipment. And so what they've, you know, what they've recognized is this equipment is sort of not at the standard where you would want it to be today, so that we can feel very comfortable that the students and programs are operating in a way that's, you know, that's how, how you would want it to work. And in the meantime, until it's, until there's an action to, to address the equipment, what we are doing is continuing to engage the inspector to come back periodically during the year to, just to check in on us and make sure that everything's in order and being, you know, being operated the way it should. As for the fund itself, this isn't, it's been, I think, four or five fiscal years. I don't know if Drew's still here or not. It's been many years since fiscal years since the Board of Ed populated the local infrastructure. We were coming to you this year anyway at the close of this budget session to ask you to repopulate that account. That account, as you recall, all of you will recall, is what we did when we reduced all of the, all of the operating money out of the maintenance budget. That's, that's the alternative. So it was time to do that anyway. Superintendent was just noting, this, this sort of brings it down to like $100,000 or so, but we were headed there, we were headed there regardless of this project. So that's kind of the origin, the genesis of how this evolved and, and why we're here now. So we feel like our approach is to replace it or to perhaps ramp up paying the consultant to do more, more frequent inspections and that sort of thing.
So the other four high schools are okay? They, they don't need any replacement of materials?
Or maybe minor things, but nothing that, yeah. It was a comprehensive report, school by school, but this is the item that requires your budgetary approval to say, you know, these are high-dollar amounts in the grand scheme of things to replace all this equipment. The other schools are much newer, so the equipment was purchased way more frequently in terms of years or decades.
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to understand whether this was more of a safety issue or more of, you know, an issue of just trying to get these three schools kind of up to par with, what the other four schools have, because if it's a safety issue, then clearly you have to do it, do it all and do it immediately, right? But if it's more of a, just get the other schools up to par with the other four, then I'm concerned about, this is a very large price tag, and are there other priorities that, so just trying to understand the, all the alternates that are, that are shown here, which almost double the, the price, you know, whether that's the right way to go or not.
Yeah, my understanding was that it was a lot of rigging and other equipment that helped to lift heavy objects.
For, for us, and Ray is welcome to join me as well, for us it is, and as I reviewed with him and his team, it is worth the price tag because we do not have the staff expertise to address it in an ongoing way, but this will comprehensively address the matter and, and leave us in a very good spot compared to, you know, comparative to this whole discussion. And to your first point or question, admittedly, this is a weird, this is sort of outside of the CIP. It's never something that's probably going to be in the CIP. It's outside of the state maintenance inspection. It's kind of a, a thing we undertook after some discussions with MAB and looking at it from an insurance kind of perspective.
Ray looks like he wants to speak.
Ray is welcome to come speak. Oh, Ray is here.
Since John invited me. Yeah, I, I would, I would argue that most of the alternates, ad-alternates are related to safety, because with the electric winches, for instance, it, it's much better to not have our staff, and I'm talking about instructional staff, getting on 18-foot ladders. And, you know, that's one of the largest work, workman's cop claims we, we have, and so there's, there's usually no disagreement there. We don't want folks climbing those ladders. We want to bring those, that rigging down to the stage level, let them do what needs to be done, and then get that back up in the air. So when we look at things like, you know, fire retardant materials, things like that, these are, you know, these are things that we need to, to take care of now. The retardant applications, the older curtain materials that we had, had an application of a fire retardant foam or a spray or some, of some sort, those are long, long past due, and it's actually cheaper to just put in that fire retardant material, and it will be good for the next 40 years. It doesn't ever have to be replaced or upgraded. So as we go down this list, there might be a few, a few items that are maybe enhancements, but they're the smaller items that you see in alternates five, six, seven, much less expensive, but even those, I would argue that it's still better. What we intend to do with those, with this, some of this house lighting rigging, is to get it into a position where it can be accessed from the catwalks, and again, you don't have to climb to it. So it, it, it all ties back. It was started from a safety perspective, but we, we broke it up a bit with the ad-alternates, specifically to kind of understand where the price was going to be, because of, because we just, this was a tough one to try to estimate.
Any other comments?
On that one.
Right, 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 on that, on, on that first one. Okay. Now we'll move on to wall wrapping services. Ms. Sevigny?
I just wanted to ask a, a little bit more detail on that, because not 100% sure I understand what we're approving, because it says the actual dollar amount of this contract will be determined by availability of funds within the maintenance and food services budgets.
Yeah, it's sort of like a buying guide, but it's not like the traditional buying guide of, of custodial supplies or something like that. We have to bring contracts to you that might exceed a certain threshold in advance, so we try to do that, we do do that. But this would be a contract that largely food services and maintenance would access when they need to. So we have Ray wrapping the facilities vans. That's one of the ways in which this contract, for instance, could be used. Karen Sarno, our supervisor of food services, uses this contract to apply the, the information, what's the term, Ray, appliques? The, the posters that adhere to the cafeteria walls that have the, like the dietary information and the healthy choices and what's going on in the program, and also sort of getting the kids in and out of, you know, the efficiencies of moving through the, the cafeterias. So this is, this is an, this is a replacement contract for an existing one that the board has approved in advance. So Karen's been doing that for a few years now.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go, if you go into, and Amy Gramata keeps telling me to get into a middle school cafeteria, that they look fantastic, but if you, and Ms. Pataglia is agreeing, if you go into the school cafeterias and just kind of look around with that in mind, you'll see how, you know, how this is all laid out and being applied.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I've definitely been in some of the cafeterias, I kind of see that. I guess I was just curious about the wrapping of the vehicles, right? Like, so, you know, we just saw the, the food services operating budget tonight, right? Like, I, I was just trying to understand how, how much monetary dollar amounts are we talking about here, just because I, I feel like if, you know, if we have extra money to spend, like, that, that's sort of a marketing campaign, and when we're, when we're scrounging to find money for lots of other things, I feel like, okay, well, maybe a marketing campaign is not necessarily the best way to spend that money, so.
Yeah. So for the V, I think Karen has a couple of vans that move from the satellites. I, I think they are already wrapped. Ray has, you know, some portion of 50-ish facilities vehicles that we would like to wrap, and there's, it's, it is a marketing campaign, that, that's certainly true. We, we want Ernesto to be able to do the, apply for a job by contacting on the back of the vans, that's a thing we added, but we wanted to wrap the facilities vehicles anyway. Some of them could, could use the, the work on the exterior, whether that's paint or wrapping. And then secondly, in addition to sort of marketing, we want them to be very visible for a couple of reasons. We, we want our folks to know that they're out there representing the school system as they're driving around in our, in their work van, which we own. And more from a security lens, we want them to be very identifiable during security-related events or potential security, security-related events. One of the things we've tripped over for years since I've been here, when, and luckily, we've not had a, a really significant security problem or issue or situation in, in our schools. But even when there's a threat and you're working through it with the police, it's hard to identify, do we, you know, we know who works at the school, but who else do we have at the school that the police are saying, we need to know if there's a facilities person on that roof or, you know, and, and when you, when Mr. Curtis, or Mr. Curtis Pierce, or Mr. Elliott look on the camera, once they're wrapped, you can say, there's a CCPS van there. There's no doubt about that, that's very obvious who that is and what that is. So it, it helps us from a security perspective as well. There were a couple of reasons why we drifted into it, and the cost, as I remember, was sort of tens of thousands of dollars, not, you know, not something that would, would compete with another priority. And also, it would be the life of the vehicle, but a one-time cost. We're not wrapping them every year or anything like that.
Okay, does it, does it have a shelf life? I mean, you don't, you wouldn't have to redo it every other year or anything like that?
The, the plan would be to wrap them once and hopefully need a new, a new van before, you know, at the time we would wrap it again.
Okay.
Yeah. It's been a bit since we, I know we shared this at one time in the past.
Yeah, I, I remember seeing it, I just don't remember the relative cost of, of, you know, like one wrapping and, and.
I think for all, I don't know if Ray, I think for all of the vehicles in the fleet, it was less than 100,000 or about 100,000. Ray is saying I remembered something correctly. So less than 100,000 if we were wrapping everything, and at this point, some are wrapped, so we're, you know, we're not starting from, from zero here.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Oh, Ms. Pataglia.
On the third one?
Oh, we are.
So I had a quick question regarding the vehicle lifts. I know that the heavy equipment program, they haven't been able to modernize that section just yet. That is the next level. With the purchase of these lifts, would they move the new lifts into the newer, modernized area?
This is all part of the great puzzle to make sure those two projects stay within budget.
Okay.
And so this is a, this is a collaboration between the instructional and the operating side of the house. Mr. Echols is allowing the use of federal Perkins money to, to make these purchases so that it stays out of the capital furniture and equipment part of the budget, but yes, these would become part of the new program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion on number three? Vehicle lift?
I, I do have, so what is, so these are grant-funded, but are they, they're certainly going to need to be maintained and potentially replaced after certain periods of time? Do we think that they will always be grant-funded?
Not, not necessarily. They could be. I mean, that's the kind of application of a Perkins grant funding, you know, to be bold or frank, if, if we, if we weren't working with inflation and other costs driving this project, we, we probably would be funding the initial purchase with the CIP money. You know, over time, it would be whatever the board has available at that moment, whether it's local capital money or whether it's Perkins grant money in a, in a given year, but hopefully it would be a few decades before we would, you know, we'll be addressing the replacement.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now I need a motion for the approval of the Jule settlement. That is our new addition, 6F.
So moved.
By Ms. Sevigny and seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
So, yes, you may go. So, Ms. Herbert, I have a motion that was, that was written by legal counsel that I'll, I'll read.
Yes, please do.
It is, I move that we settle the civil suit against Jewel Labs, Inc., for an amount within 5% of $626,238.77, and that we delegate to Superintendent McCabe the authority to sign any settlement agreement within that range as a long, as long as the settlement agreement is approved for legal sufficiency by counsel.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Do we want Rochelle to give like a?
I got a second, okay. Now, we may go forward.
Am I on?
Yes, you are.
Yes, there has been a class action filed against Jewel regarding the use of its products by minors and by our students, which has had a deleterious health impact on them. And there has been a settlement, which is nationwide. Carroll County is one of several Maryland school districts that signed on. It is a wonderful thing for us, and you're going to be able to utilize the money for pretty much anything you want, but I believe that your intended use is going to be in some way to positively impact the health of your students. So this is money you didn't have before, and we are hopeful that this litigation will prevent more students from becoming involved in products such as products like Jewel was selling.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Well, can we?
Oh, okay, Doc, you didn't have your card up. I don't even know where your card is. Okay, Dr. Dorsey.
Can we get a breakdown of how that money is going to be received by our system?
Um, do you have?
Yes. I took notes on that.
You just turned yourself off.
We believe it's going to be with 50% of the money being provided in the fall of '23. The second amount will be 12 and 1/2% in December, and then 12 and 1/2% each year until 2026, when the entire amount will be funded.
Okay.
So it's little by little, but enough each time to help you in some way benefit the Carroll County Public Schools students.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Pataglia, Ms. Sevigny, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I.
Oh, okay. Any other cards? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Now, Ms. Herbert, could I, could I just make a comment? Like, I, now that we've taken the vote, I just wanted to, so we, we can use that money in any way, but we, you know, clearly we would like to use it towards health, health education or health outcomes, you know, improving health outcomes for our students. I just wanted to put in a plug. I know one of the things that we had talked about several board meetings ago was CPR certification, how that was something that we were struggling with finding the, the funding for, for our health to students. I think that might, just throwing it out there as a suggestion of something that might make sense.
Well, thank you for that comment. I appreciate it. Very positive, I like that. All right. And now we will move on to this discussion, and we have a 7A. Proposed changes to board policy CN internal audit.
This month, we are submitting for discussion proposed changes to board policy CN internal audit. The proposed changes are being made simply to more accurately describe how the audit function has always operated since its inception. There would be no significant change in the process or annual schedule. Policy changes are submitted for discussion and returned one month later for board action. We also share for the board's information the proposed revisions to the accompanying administrative regulations.
Questions? All right.
We, we won't be voted, this is just for our review for this week, and that, so this will go out for?
30, 30 days?
And then it'll come back next month.
Okay. Great.
For comments. All right. Okay. Unfinished or new business? I have, no one has contacted me, and three members have not asked for anything else, but I am very serious about, parents, it is time for you all to wake up, and I'm going to repeat this again, because it is not, it is not a good climate out there right now. Blueprint is going to change Carroll County Public Schools, and we do need this funding. And I cannot thank the commissioners for working for, you know, cannot thank you enough for working with us, but we are in dire straits, and I am telling you, Ms. McCabe and the other people out there in the group, this is a minimalist budget. We could have add- We could have added many, many, many more, a million things, but we are getting by, and we have been getting by for the last six or seven years by the skin of our teeth, and, and we have been outperforming all the counties in the state of Maryland. So, yes, and unfortunately, this blueprint is mandated by the state, and we do not have a choice. And this will definitely mean that we will have fewer resources, and we will have larger class sizes. And I know that is a concern for all parents in Carroll County, and it will affect your children. So I really need to make sure that you all are aware of this. I, and if you don't act now, we cannot help you later. We cannot help you in September. Johnny's got 58 in his class, and Suzie's got 45. So please, we need your support as parents. I'm asking you again to contact our commissioners. They will talk to you. Go to a town hall, call them, email them, make an appointment, go to the budget hearings. There are so many times and places that you all can be heard. We need you to be a voice for Carroll County Public School and help us help your students still be number one academically in the state of Maryland. We cannot do this by ourselves, or Carroll County is definitely going to be looking totally different in two years. I want our children to succeed. They need their resource teachers in the school. Every school needs resource teachers. We cannot be taking some out of one school and giving it to another. So I want to make sure that these parents in Carroll County understand what we are up against. We need this funding, or your child will no longer attend the top school in the state of Maryland. We need your help. And I hope we can all work this out with the commissioners and the parents backing us to continue to have a wonderful academic group here in CCPS and be number one or two. And I thank all of you for everything, and especially, the blueprint and the budget has been very difficult, and I know a lot of you back out there sitting have been doing two jobs for a year, and we appreciate that. You've been doing blueprint, and you've been doing budgeting, plus, you're a supervisor or you're someone else, but you all have been doing two jobs at this, for the last year, and I really do appreciate this. I worked in this system for over 40 years. I appreciate our teachers, I appreciate all of you, I appreciate our employees, but parents, I have never called out like this, but we do need your support for this coming up. And I will tell you, each year comes more demanding on the blueprint for money. I thank you. And here we go. 5:00 PM, Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, board meeting with public participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. So between now and March 8th, you all have plenty of time to contact your commissioners. Please, and I'm being serious, they need to be heard, they need to hear what you have to say, because I do want Carroll County to continue to be number one academically in the state of Maryland. Thank you. And now I need a motion to adjourn. So moved by Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Don't jinx us. Thank you, it was unanimous. Have a great evening.